Valley Transportation Authority, VTA El Camino Real Bus Rapid Transit Project. And I don't think there's a staff report for this, so we will begin with a presentation from -- Steve, you're going to have to help me, but please introduce yourself.
My name is Kevin Honnely.
Kevin, I apologize.
Steve, I'm with me is Steve Fisher, as well as Adam Berger from our staff, and Carla Vincent is from our consultants. Due to the late hour, and I know you're anxious to get to this item, so I'm going to get right to it. I'll be short and snappy and to the point. What we're here to talk to you about is Bus Rapid Transit Project. I know we came before in June of this year. Mr. Fishbaugh, Councilmember Fishbaugh invited us back. Due to the subsequent work that's occurred since then, and we're happy to share that work with you, which involves a preliminary staff recommendation for a project designed that we would like to submit to both Caltrans as well as the Federal Transit Administration. There are multiple layers of government involved in this project. We're going to talk a little bit about the growth in the El Camino, how we're planning for that growth through a transit project, the benefits of the BRT project to accommodate that growth, as well as today's service, the decision process, and then our staff recommendation. And we'll have time at the end where we'll actually walk the alignment in terms of aerial shots and how the different design affects El Camino in different ways. So why are we here? We're -- VTA wants to improve the quality of service for our riders today. We also want to attract new riders to the service. More people riding transit is a good thing. We heard direction from our policy, from our Board of Directors. In 2009, they adopted a Bus Rapid Transit Strategic Plan that gave us an action item, moving forward on three corridors, El Camino, Alum Rock Avenue, and Stevens Creek. We also believe that we're consistent with direct policy direction from cities such as there is. In some cases, cities have done general plan updates. In other cases, cities are involved in general plan updates right now. The Grand Boulevard Initiative is a key part of policy for the El Camino, not just in Santa Clara County, but San Mateo County as well. And then finally, we try to do every project as a cost-effective, high-capacity solution for growing places in this county. Bus Rapid Transit, if you're not familiar with, is coming in a lot of places in California, and particularly Northern California. The Santa Clara-Alum Rock Project is a fully funded project. That project goes into construction next year. It will be operational by summer of 2014. And then San Francisco has a few projects, and the East Bay has projects. A lot of these projects have received federal funding already, or state-level funding, and these projects are an investment emphasis on both the state and the federal level. In terms of growth and population projection, MTC and the Association for Bay Area Governments is projecting a lot of growth in Santa Clara County. I'm sure you've probably seen charts like this in your planning work for your city. I'm not going to belabor it. In terms of El Camino, how that looks both near-term and long-term, as well as a short band around El Camino, a quarter-mile, a longer one with a half-mile, there's a lot of growth in that corridor projected for each of the cities. And there's six cities that share this corridor, as we define it, from downtown San Jose to Palo Alto. As you can see, Los Altos doesn't have a huge share of El Camino, but there's sort of a proportional amount of growth that is occurring. 10% on your small section is pretty significant. So without El Camino, and as we do a lot of public outreach, and we've done a lot for this project, there's questions about what El Camino looks like with this project, what El Camino looks like without this project. And without the project, given that level of growth, there's some significant changes occurring on that street. Vehicle miles traveled increased by 35%. Vehicle hours increased by 100%. And the peak-hour traffic volume increases in a lot of places in this county, 12% on El Camino, 35% on Central, and then 63% on Foothill. The benefits in terms of the transit is that we can have much faster service. It's branded. It appeals to a different market segment. There's flexibility in the alignment. And we offer something like rail. It's Wi-Fi prepaid fare, a much more significant station, and experience for the passenger and the customer. It improves our efficiency. We actually, the faster we go, the more efficient we are as a service. And we project that we would be about 258 per passenger here, which is roughly a 75% fare box recovery, which is very, very good in terms of the overall transit agency, unprecedented in this county. It also produces a mode shift from autos to transit, as well as other modes, such as walking and biking. And a bike lane is a big part of the staff recommendation here. In terms of what we feel the benefits the cities are, and I guess this is in case you're not compelled by what improvements for transit, is that, for one, it's a $240 million investment in El Camino. And that's investment of regional as well as federal money. It's not a dollar of city money. It reduces greenhouse gases, reduces congestion, and reduces vehicle miles traveled. Most cities that are struggling with doing air quality programs and plans, and I know you're pursuing some of those things, are trying to find ways to reduce these elements because these are mandated by state law. It adds bike lanes. That's very appealing to a lot of segments of the population. And it improves pedestrian facilities. There's removal of some of the pork chops, and that's a technical term, referring to a triangular piece of concrete that separates the right-turn lane from the crosswalk, increases crossings on the street. It shortens the crossings, making it easier for people who don't walk as fast to get across what is a very wide street. So where we are in the process today, El Camino is our highest ridership street in our entire system. It's 20% of the overall transit ridership every day in Santa Clara County. We adopted the strategic plan in 2009, giving VTA sort of policy direction to pursue these projects. We feel we're consistent with the Grand Boulevard Initiative. Grand Boulevard Initiative has validated that feeling in sort of saying that this is implementation of Grand Boulevard. We're in conceptual engineering. That is 10% level of design. In VTA projects, we typically go 10%, 35%, and 65%. And there's decision processes all along the way, so by no means are we going into construction anytime soon. And there's still a lot of design, a lot of planning work to go. Part of what we're doing, though, is that we're identifying whether the preliminary investment strategy -- this is a requirement both by Caltrans, which is the owner of the facility, as well as the Federal Transit Administration, which is a potential funder. And they ask that the cities involved in the corridor, as well as the transit agency, take a preliminary investment strategy and adopt it in some fashion. That's why we're touring all of the cities this spring and winter. Workshops such as this one are a chance to allow you to ask us questions and us to share information. We were in Mountain View last week. We have scheduled meetings with Sunnyvale, as well as San Jose, Santa Clara later. There will still be environmental review of this project. This is really just the start of a much more detailed piece of analysis and engineering. Caltrans becomes a key factor in how this project is shaped in the future. And the FTA Small Starts Program is what we're pursuing in terms of funding. That is as much as $75 million towards the overall $240 million cost. So the choice before us in broad terms is two versions of the build alternative that we're going to share with you and talk about tonight in our detailed. And first, I'll just say that El Camino is 120 feet wide, with one exception is the Alameda and San Jose. There are lots of competing interests for use of that real estate: autos, transit, there's parking on-street in many locations, bikes would like to use it, they use it today, pedestrians, and then there's landscape meetings in many locations. Which interest should get priority? Can all these interests be accommodated? This is really a policy discussion and decision. We have information that we can share with you. As the transit agency, we are obviously sort of trying to advocate for the best transit project, but it's an overall policy decision that really requires your input. So I'll tell you, here's the two different alternatives in terms of build. The first is called, we call, mixed flow. Mixed flow is essentially station bulb-outs, so wider sidewalks at the location of stations. In Los Altos, we're proposing a station at the Showers intersection. It's a lower capital expenditure. It's constrained by the surrounding traffic. So in other words, the vehicles, the buses that are in traffic in the future would be constrained in terms of its travel time. There's spot improvements. Those are just occurring at the stations. Outside the stations, it's really, there's no change to the street. The street is the same. It's a longer travel time in terms of the transit. The operating costs are higher because the speed is slower, and the ridership is lower also, basically based on the speed. The dedicated lane arrangement, what it is, is it converts the interior lanes on El Camino to transit lanes, so it converts them from general travel lanes. Instead of three lanes each direction, there would be two. That provides separate lanes, four general-purpose lanes. It limits the conflicts with other traffic in terms of transit is now separated from other traffic. And from that perspective, it improves safety in separating the modes. It provides a bike lane buffered by two to three feet of a hatched painted area. Less time at stations means a faster service. It's a higher level of service in terms of investment. Passengers respond, tend to respond better to the higher level. And it's a complete street treatment in the sense of it would make pedestrian improvements and bike improvements and transit improvements throughout the street, throughout the corridor. They would not just be in spot locations. And it does result in higher ridership. What does a four-lane El Camino look like? This question we get a lot when we do public outreach meetings. And luckily, there's some nearby examples, Menlo Park, Redwood City-Burlingame. I think we actually heard all these cities referenced in the previous item when we were talking about Safeway. And this is the staff recommendation that we took to our Policy Advisory Board. Our Policy Advisory Board made up of members from each city, as well as the county supervisors, suggested that we tour this around to the cities, get their input before we go to the VTA Board, and that's one reason why we're before you today. What we're suggesting is a 10.3-mile dedicated lane segment between Lafayette Street and Santa Clara and Showers Drive in Los Altos. That would meet one of the federal requirements, which is that 50% of the corridor has to be in dedicated lanes. This is a 17.3-mile corridor. It also is the most cost-effective in terms of all of our analysis, and we've looked at every possible variation of dedicated versus mixed-flow lanes. All in all, it equals about 36 different variations of dedicated, mixed-flow, and no build. And this one really comes out top in terms of scoring for ridership, cost recovery, and So with the preliminary investment strategy, just to sum up, in terms of the transit benefits, it greatly improves the BRT and the transit travel time. And again, speed is critical in terms of transit service. It attracts people. People don't want to ride transit if it's much slower. It's a 34% increase improvement on eastbound direction, 28% on the westbound direction. There's actually very little impact auto travel time, and it's somewhat counterintuitive. But what happens is a lot of autos find alternative routes. Those alternative routes tend to have a lot more capacity, for example, Central Expressway. And El Camino basically stays the same in terms of its congestion level. There is a mode shift. We do see people moving from autos to transit and walking and biking in terms of our forecasts. The level of service stays about the same. Six intersections are in Level of Service F without a project. With the project, it's five intersections. And some traffic diverse to multiple other routes. We've done an initial level analysis on that, not the detailed level that we will do as we move into environmental. And what we can really share with you in terms of what we've done is the actual regional network. None of the smaller residential streets are really in our model yet. That would come as we start to do environmental analysis. Relevant here to Los Altos would probably be the Foothill corridor, as you can see here in terms of the change. It's relatively modest, but there is a change. I mean, there's no denying that. And so we're not suggesting that there wouldn't be a change. There would, in terms of traffic and how it moves throughout this entire region.
Can you go back to that slide for just a second? Okay, so capacity is not what, that's what the roadway can handle. Your project is what you project to be the usage in 2035 without BRT, and then the next column is what you predict the usage to be if there's BRT?
Right.
Okay, but this does not explain how the people divert from El Camino Real to any of those other corridors.
It shows that these corridors, those corridors change in terms of, for example, I'll just take Middlefield, for example, westbound. It goes from 963 in terms of a vehicle peak-hour volume up to over 1,000. So there is more. And so that's a diverted trip that would have taken El Camino before.
And we also don't have what the current usage is on this graph, right?
No, this is a projection.
I have a question on this. Can you cover Foothill and Miramonte line?
Excuse me.
My question is, you have Foothill and Miramonte increasing.
Yeah.
Can you cover that projection? Yeah, what is the W O?
Without, oh, west of.
West of, thank you very much. All right. I was reading it without.
Oh, sorry. Me too. My apologies in terms of, that is confusing. As an illustration about the policy decision and the dynamics going on, and again, this project has been in planning level with, and we've been working with your staff, we meet with staff on a monthly basis for about 18 months now. And we've gotten to the point where we really are sort of requiring some policy input. Here's an illustration. Parking, which, for example, is important for the city of Santa Clara, on-street parking. Bike lanes, that's important for some cities. There is a choice there, and that's an emphasis. For some cities, we'd prefer to emphasize one over another. It is possible to do both. Santa Clara, for example, is doing both. And what they're doing is they're reducing the median width. I'll use Mountain View as an example. The median width has to stay the same. And so Mountain View is struggling with, is it parking or is it biking? And that's sort of the, there's only so much square footage of street to go around. So now we can walk the alignment. I'm going to turn it over to Steve Fisher, the project manager.
Thank you, councilmembers. Good to be back. People are interested in the physical changes to the corridor under each of the scenarios. So I'm going to show a few slides, aerial photographs with the project superimposed that covers all three options: no build, mixed flow, and the portion of dedicated lanes that falls within Los Altos. So on the far northern end of Los Altos, the project is exactly the same under any scenario. There is no change. There's no, you know, the buses would operate in the right-hand lane. They would stop at bus stops for a local service, and there are stations here. So there'd be no changes to this portion of the corridor. Probably the most interesting thing that you see on the slide is the illustration of the city boundary, which is, when we got into the project, that's atypical. Normally, when you have a street that's separating the cities, the lines in the middle of the road, in this case, I guess because of historical reasons, there is, Los Altos actually owns all the way up to the street line. Same thing for the next slide. I'm going to go very quickly until we get to where we actually start doing the project. So when we get up to San Antonio Road, that's where the street starts to vary. These are 2008 aerial photographs, so you don't see the current construction at the shopping center, the redevelopment shopping center. So this is the existing condition. This would be, again, the existing condition. But if we do go with the dedicated lane scenario, at this point, you would see the transition point between the four-lane section of El Camino, just south of the shopping center, to the six-lane section, and you would have a station. That is one half of a station. And the next slide will show you the other half. If you're familiar with light rail station, when you're operating the median, you have split platforms, the northbound platform. If you're waiting for the bus to go to Palo Alto, you take the crosswalk and wait on that blue area, and that is the station.
Steve, while we're actually on that last slide there, currently, there's a mixed-flow station right outside of Whole Foods Market here.
Correct.
And could you just help me understand the mixed-flow station there? Is that going to stay the same?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay, you'll circle back.
Yeah. Yes, it would stay the same. There would be less buses than there are now. So the operating plan is that all the buses that are the rapids, the 522, which would be every 10 minutes, six per hour, would be moved to the median. They would not stop at the current station. You would just have the Line 22 locals, which we would be decreasing to just four to three an hour. So you would actually, on this scenario, you would have less buses immediately at the Whole Food, but I'll get into the mixed-flow alternative in a second. Staying with the dedicated lanes, the other half of the station is on the other side of Showers Drive. And we would, the other question we get quite a bit is, where could we retain the cross-streets and the free left turns? Intrinsic in this project, when you're building bus lanes, the intersections have to be signalized. So there is flexibility in the dedicated lane portion in terms of retaining all of the street and all the left turns, but it would require installing new traffic signals to allow that to happen. So getting to Councilmember Fishbaugh's question. Again, and this is half a station. So if you're going to southbound towards Mountain View, all the buses would be in the right-hand lane. There would be a curb extension. We call it a bulb-out station, where the sidewalk comes out another five to eight feet, and the station amenities then would be placed in that area. It would look like a light rail station currently looks. And of course, the opposite station is at the opposite corner. But with mixed flow, there's no other changes to the street other than those curb extensions that I just described. So going back to the dedicated lanes, you would still, you would have the ability to place a traffic signal at Distal Circle. There's discussion of whether you can keep Distal Circle and Distal Drive open and Rengstorf. And you can by installing, against installing traffic signal. And that, you know, illustrates that there is flexibility to retain that in the dedicated lanes. It's just a question if that was approved, going to the next level of engineering, what works best for the local agencies involved, because they all work for the transit project. So that concludes the, one more slide. That's getting us to, that's a option that retains a left turn at Distal Drive in addition to just the regular traffic. So we're at the decision process that Kevin described before. We have a preliminary recommendation. We'll make a tour of the cities. We'll be returning to our own VTA Board of Directors in June with kind of a revised staff recommendation based on what we hear from the cities. And at that point, we'll be going to environmental review and the Caltrans project. So that concludes our presentation. We can open up for questions.
Any questions from council? Let's see, Mr. Packard?
Yes, I appreciate your coming here, wading through our long prior agenda. But I want to ask, as I went through, you know, I appreciate all that the VTA does, and you do a lot of good things, but is there a fourth option? And that is the city elects not to participate in any way.
Yeah, there's always the no-build option.
Yeah. And could you say in just a couple sentences, what are the negative consequences to us other than, you know, the lack of, you know, we won't participate in the projected whatever?
So we still have a heavy level of bus service on El Camino.
Yeah.
And you would see an increased level of bus service at that one platform, the existing area at Whole Foods, that you could, that could, you know, and traffic would naturally increase. You could see that as a negative impact. You would lose the opportunity for VTA to do a bike project. You may not want that opportunity for that one.
Now, another question is that I sat through on the VTA Advisory Board 30 years ago when we were looking at low light rail. And Rod Dyrdon was heavily involved, and the projections were fantastic back then. And you said the projections are phenomenal.
Yeah.
The projections he made have been not nearly accurate. How do we know these projections are going to, are any better?
Projections are projections. What I can tell you is that the land-use forecasts that go into the model are done by ABAG. They're not done by VTA, so do you trust ABAG?
No, no, I agree with the land-use model. I'm talking about the ridership.
The ridership model has gone many, many, has gone through many, many revisions since that time. And what I can tell you is when we're in conjunction with doing the bar project, the federal government hired a, they're an independent consulting team to audit our model, to look at our model.
I have no confidence in the federal judgment, government, when it comes to traffic. But thank you very much.
So that, that's the answer.
So Mr. Fishbaugh, a question?
You know, I, my only question is if we have, I think the Whole Foods, the Showers Drive bus station is a heavily-used bus station. It's certainly something that I think we have to be very cautious of or very aware of how we want to design that. The two options that we saw, and Ron asked potentially about the third option of no build, the two options we saw was the dedicated lanes, which would put a station in the median there. Or mixed flow, which would leave the station on the side of the road, but would actually bump it out. Currently today, a lot of drivers actually use the bus lane right there as a right-hand turn into Whole Foods.
Yeah.
And so that would have an impact on that, potentially, the level of service at that intersection, just simply by putting the bump out there, might actually have an impact because so many people that make a right-hand turn are now forced to not use a bus lane as a right-hand turn lane. But the third option, if I understand correctly, is there the ability to leave the bus stop there as it is today? Or does VTA really want to see one of the two options pursued, either the mixed-flow bump out or the dedicated lanes center median?
So we've looked at the Whole Foods stop, and I agree, it's not a great situation. When we get to the next level of engineering, one of the challenges under any of the circumstances is to look, hone in on the detail of that. We may find that, and I'm speculating here, that under the mixed-flow option, that you're correct, we may not, you know, extending that sidewalk may not be great without greatly altering the access to Whole Foods, which I don't think we want to do. I don't think the project wants to take that on. So you might have a bulb-out on the opposite side by the other shopping center, but it's something we need to analyze in a much more detailed engineering way.
Right.
Because we need to squeeze a number of, a better bus shelter into that fixed area that's there now. And can we do that? We've done it in other places. On the Santa Clara-Alum Rock Project, we found that we were just constrained in a couple of places, and we were able to really squeeze the station in. So that's certainly a possibility.
Okay. And then my second question that I have, I've talked about this with a number of residents, and the first question I always get is, you know, going down to two lanes, it seems like the capacity or the throughput would, their first question to me is, is the capacity dramatically reduced by eliminating one of the lanes? We see that the travel times actually are nominally impacted, and the explanation provided is the diversion to other corridors. But is the capacity itself dramatically reduced on El Camino?
It is. It's, you're losing, I think, roughly 900, yeah, so a lane of traffic accommodates like 950, I believe. And so you're losing that.
Yeah.
You know, it goes away. That's, and that's why you get some level of diversion. Now, not to be too idealistic, some of that diversion also goes onto the bus, which we love from VTA's perspective. But yeah, it is reduced for automobile capacity.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Cassis?
Sure. Can you go back to the Showers intersection?
Whoops. Think I passed it.
You did? Yeah. Okay. So I would encourage, and this is just one example, to actually have a whole intersection design to look at rather than the left side, the right side.
Yeah.
I don't think it's an effective tool from a visualization standpoint, predominantly because, for the point that Jarrett was raising, on the bus, you've basically eliminated the southbound traffic at that intersection to one lane. Because when a bus is stopped there, there's no way to get around it. You have only one southbound lane, whereas today, you have three southbound lanes and a dedicated concrete pad for a bus, which is the right-hand turn, which is a concern when you're reducing from basically three operating lanes to one.
Yeah.
So I don't see how that is a viable option, which is hard to look at in isolation on the left side without then looking at the right side. So if you can go to your next slide. So here, you continue with the two lanes, that's fine. The concern I have is the left-hand turn into Whole Foods, that's inadequately short. The concern I have is the left-hand turn into Whole Foods, that's inadequately short. Jordan Avenue is much longer with not nearly the amount of traffic. So again, another design concern, but again, you're only looking at right side, left side, it'd be good to look at the intersections in totality. I think you can do that. If you can go back to the previous slide. I'm sure you're aware that there is currently, next to Whole Foods there on the slide, a concept of a project being proposed.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's going to significantly change the dynamics of that parcel. Are you, have you incorporated that proposed development into this design?
No, we're still doing, my colleague, who sits right next to me, is still doing a plan review. I think he may have just submitted you comments on that. We will, I mean, at this stage of the project, the plans are very fluid, it's easy to change those, so we will certainly incorporate those if we pursue this alternative.
Okay. The final thing is, I don't believe that there's a significant amount, I just did a satellite flyover using Google, there doesn't appear to be a significant impact on the street parking until you pass Mariposa, which is on the other side of El Monte.
Right.
We have a lot more shops with not as much onsite parking. So I know Mountain View has expressed some concerns, and they have wanted you to come back, and I believe in the newspaper over the last couple of days, I had seen something, I don't remember which paper. What is your timeline for circling back with them to address the Mountain View concern? And what is your timeline for coming back to us? Because I know we're receiving a report, and we're providing direction.
Right.
So I'm, I'm looking for timelines, because I'm in favor of improving transportation to get people out of cars. I voted for the 522. It's a great product. But today, my concern is how this is developed, it needs to understand what the unintended consequences are, and I just pointed out one with showers.
Yeah. So Mountain View took a swirl poll at our work session a week ago, and I believe by a four, four negative, two in favor, and one abstained, they were in favor of the mixed-flow alternative, and actually, they asked their staff to pursue a bike lane independently of that, of that project at that same meeting. That was comment from the council, there wasn't a...
A decision?
We would like to get that formalized from Mountain View, whatever, because it's hard for us to convey to people who are proponents of the project, who are looking at the project, that there was an informal vote. So we'd like to get, we'd like to circle back in another two months with Mountain View. Now, there may be some discussion on their part, that we already told you what you thought while you're back here. We'd like to have your formal comments by April of, of this year. Because we want to go back to our Board of Directors and have time to analyze this thing. Here's what we have. We have, we thought, we originally recommended 10 miles of dedicated lane. We may have lost some as the process went forward. We may have lost, we, we may have lost some ridership in, in addition to losing a dedicated lane, so the project becomes not quite as effective as we wanted it to be, therefore, our staff recommendation is this. So we need, but, so we do need the cities to go on record, so just, so we are able to responsibly report back to our board as to what the project is, and we're able to tell Caltrans, who's the owner of the road, Los Altos is in favor, not in favor.
So I think with, based on your response, there's two concerns I have. One, I would like to see the, the final iteration before we actually exercise our final vote and voice. That's my, but I'm only one of five. The, the second is, my concern is with San Antonio and El Camino, there are a number of housing projects that are being considered and developed, both over in Palo Alto, Mountain View slash Palo Alto, and then on the other side, in Mountain View along El Camino. And that intersection is not rated very well.
Yeah.
And so if we constrict to one lane at Showers, that will push traffic back, which will impede the intersection at San Antonio, which is my predominant concern. So that's my feedback. I'd like to see the next iteration, if possible. I think in concept, it's good, but I think there's a lot of questions such as showers.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sandoval?
Yeah, so I've seen at the VTA PAC presentations on the Bus Rapid Transit, so I understand from a bus rider perspective, the values. I would really like to better understand the impacts to the vehicles on El Camino, as well as the diversion of vehicles off El Camino. So, for example, you spoke of, where the proposal is to eliminate lane capacity of 950 cars. 950 people can't ride the Bus Rapid Transit. I, I don't know what number we expect to ride the Bus Rapid Transit, 50? You know, I, I don't know what the number is. So we're taking capacity, replacing it with something that has far less capacity, so even if every single one of those car drivers wanted to convert, they can't. And my concern is, you've shown that these, these cars can be accommodated on other quarters like Central and Foothill, but what you haven't shown is how they, you know, divert from El Camino to those. Right now, San Antonio and Foothill Expressway intersection is gridlocked at, in the, in the PM hours. Grant Road is bumper-to-bumper in the, in the, in the PM hours. El Monte, constant complaints from our residents about vehicle safety on that road. All of those are corridors through our cities, many of which have single-family residential homes with driveways directly onto those corridors. So to really understand whether this is in the best interest of the city of Los Altos, I would need a lot more information as to how we expect drivers, that we fully expect to divert from El Camino, because it's at capacity, you're eliminating capacity, they won't stay on El Camino, they'll go somewhere else, where they're going to go. Because I don't think it's in, you know, the best interests of the region to push more and more cars driving through single-family residential neighborhoods, and that's my concern. And, and we don't have the information before us to know whether that's a valid concern or irrelevant. The other thing that I've seen in, in other travel projects where there's been a change in capacity, sure, I can, instead of driving El Camino, I can now drive Central Expressway, but, and my, my travel time on El Camino hasn't, you know, changed because I'm no longer there, but my travel time has still increased, because getting to Central Expressway and getting back to my destination takes me way out of my way, because El Camino was the, you know, the prior, the, the most direct travel route. So I'm actually adding vehicle miles travel to divert to these other roads that have capacity. And I would like to understand how that works, because I've, you know, I've seen it from, you know, capacity was eliminated on Arastodaro and Palo Alto, and you, you can follow the commentary there, "Oh, well, people just, can just go over to Page Mill, and that's where everyone should be anyways." Well, Page Mill has capacity issues, but a lot of people on Arastodaro, because they don't want to be on Page Mill, they want to be farther south. So, you know, I, I think there's dynamics around this model that are not being understood right now. The model has focused on the, the benefits to, to the bus riders. I think those are well-understood. Now, we need to understand the benefits to the people who can't ride the bus, who won't be able to ride the bus, because there's not sufficient capacity to, to accommodate all the current users of El Camino, and even projected users.
Good points.
We do have one public speaker, but let me just put my two cents in, and then I'll call the very patient Gary Headon to the podium. First, we did receive a number of positive emails supporting this, not all, there was at least one that was negative, but we, we did get quite a few of those, so I just want to note that for the record. I'd also like to note that Whole Foods is in our, I believe is in our top 25 sales tax revenue generators for the city of Los Altos, so I don't think that we really want to do anything to, to cause that sales tax revenue to decline.
As is the Vitamin Shop.
As is the Vitamin Shop, too, well, which is right there also, that's right, on that property that will be redeveloped. And I share Mr. Cassis's concern about the redevelopment of the San Antonio Shopping Center. There are 350 apartments going in there, and my understanding is there's another proposal for an additional 200 apartments there or more. I think that definitely needs to be considered in this, in this design, so. Those are my comments, and if there's nothing else from council, I will call Gary Headon to the podium. Thank you for your presentations. And do we have anyone else who would wish to speak on this item? No, so please, three minutes.
Yes, I'm still here, Gary Headon, resident of Los Altos. As you know, I support bike riding, I've been, I commuted by bike for 12 years to work, so I, I've done it. But I don't ride a bike on El Camino, it's way too dangerous. And so, I'm looking at this, and I can see this is really complicated, trying to get, like, we always know, the devil's in the details, and so it is an issue. But one thing strikes out, strikes me is, one option was to keep the parking and eliminate the bike lane, and so I really don't like that. The parking can go somewhere else, the bike lane, once it's, if it's not there, it's never going to be there. It can't be anywhere else, it has to be there. And so, we're talking about getting people out of cars into buses, and I'm hoping some people might actually get on a bike, and, and use these bike lanes if they exist and they're safe, because that is one of the big impediments to, to riding a bike, safety. And I talk to people all the time, and they say, "Well, I've got a friend who, he rides his bike to the Y to work out." Well, he doesn't feel comfortable riding a bike, and this is crazy. So I'm used to it, but I still don't ride on El Camino. So, there was a presentation last week at, at the 359 State, the pop-up on Bikes Make Life Better, and one, the, the two presenters are consultants, they work with a number of companies, Google and Facebook, and they've mentioned, Facebook is putting in, they're in middle part, they have about 3,000 employees now, they're going to double by the end of the year to 6,000 employees. It's a real challenge for Facebook to get these people to work, and how they're going to get around work, they're going to have little like, not zip cars, but zip bikes on the campus site. They want to encourage people, they have to encourage people to carpool, ride their bikes, use public transit. This is, this is where we have to go, because I don't know how accurate these projections are either, but they're pretty scary, too. Not as scary as riding on El Camino, though. Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. That's our only public speaker. Any further council comments, Mr. Cassis?
I don't know if we need all of you at the next meeting to present. I would encourage that final iteration to come back this way, in a timely way and timely basis, to allow us to comment on it, if at all possible. We do have one rep now for Palo Alto, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, and Mountain View, and that's Margaret Abicoga. And so she can help carry our voice, and I know that Megan and the others have worked with Margaret on a number of, of things. So I, I would encourage you to, to come back probably in our, at a minimum, at our second meeting in March, if at all possible, even if it's not the final design that you're presenting to Mountain View, at least to understand what does that look like. I would like to get as close to the final proposal as possible, so the board has our voice, and Margaret can carry that voice for us on the board. And it's ironic that Megan mentions Arastodaro, because I actually now don't travel the entire road, I cut into the neighborhood. It's much faster going down Mayville than it is Arastodaro. That is an unintended consequence that I'm sure other individuals that transport themselves that direction have learned. So, traffic like water will find the easiest route.
All right, any other comments, Mr. Packard?
Yes, I may be too tired to be careful and political, but my preference would be to, to stop all support and recommend that they don't spend any more money. It may be $240 million, but that's our money. That's the taxpayers' money, and I just think it's a waste. I, I think that there's so many unintended consequences, so many uncertainties, we're going to spend that money, and it's, it's, it's going to end up probably with, with the result that's worse, worse off than what we've got now, so that's just how I feel about it.
Do we need to take any action tonight, or do you have, you have what you need from us? Any, again, any further comments? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move to our last agenda item, which is item number 12, community survey...